Cam Carter.
Here.
Bill Crum.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Ken Meyer.
Here. Would you like to invite everyone to stand and recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The minutes of the March 7th each meeting were all emailed. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion accept them as emailed?
Second. Motion second. All papers say aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you. First item on the agenda is at the last meeting we passed ordinance 2015-3, which is annexation of the nature preserve between Stratton addition and the river. It's up for its third and final reading.
No discussions? Make a motion and place ordinance 2015-3 in its third reading by short title?
Second. Motion second. All papers say aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. He comes looking for the ordinance. Should. Ordinance 2015-3, short title on ordinance annexing certain territory commonly known as the St. Mary's Assumption of Eleven, annexation in the city of Decatur, Indiana.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2015-3?
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call, roll, please.
Cam Carter.
Yes.
Bill Crum.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Order 2015-3 is adopted. Stellar, great news today. We are selected as a finalist for the Stellar, and that's exciting and kind of intimidating at the same time. So I'm sure we had a good experience last year preparing for our strategic investment plan, and I'm very confident we'll have as much enthusiasm and excitement this year in our presentation for the Stellar and trying to be successful in the Stellar program. So there is a meeting on April 16th at Fort Benjamin Harrison in Indianapolis, and that is a workshop for the Stellar communities. There are five communities that have been given the designation as a finalist. Ourselves, of course, City of Marion, and Crawfordsville. Those three are in the large cities division. For the division, 6,500 population unless, that's North Liberty, Indiana, which is up by South Bend, and Dunkirk, which is down in Western Jay County, so those two communities. Out of the five, there'll be two selected, so we'll work hard to do what we can. Can't promise anything, but hard work and determination to do what we can do. Greater Decatur Group really led the charge, and I'm sure they'll be very, very involved with us. Kristy Sturz was hired last year. I'm sure we'll be talking to Kristy here shortly. In fact, she's coming to Decatur tomorrow for something different, but we'll talk to her tomorrow about her involvement in the Stellar program also. Cam, I know you've been heavily involved in it. Anything you want to add to that?
Well, I'll just maybe touch on, we had a downtown design, the plan that we commissioned the designers to do. They, one of the meetings today with Main Street Group, which representatives are here. The part of that discussion was, as it leads into Stellar application, of making sure we had some of that design work done, having another public meeting. I'm gonna look at Melissa here. Did you happen to, we had two dates in mind, and we need to kind of solidify one. Did you happen to check with?
I was meeting with.
Okay. Okay. Well, we need to check with Riverside Center first, but there was two days in early May. I don't know if you want me to say them now or not.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll get with Riverside tomorrow.
I mean, the primary date we're looking at was May 7th, which is a Thursday, with a backup of May 12. Meeting from 6:00 to 8:00, and it's really an opportunity for everybody to kind of bring everybody up to speed on where we are and talk about some of the more refined design elements and do, much like the breakout sessions that we did last year with the public, to kind of get their input on the specifics of the design.
I think that's very important to have the public input. I like that part. We're here representing the public, and we need to know what they want, not what we want, so that'll be good.
But our application will due the 30th of June.
30th of June, right. Yeah, application has to be into OKRA, Office of Community Rural Affairs, 30th of June, and then on, I'm not sure exactly what date it was, but sometime in August at the State Fair they make the announcement. I think last year was August 14th.
And they'll be citing this until the end of July.
So it's exciting that we are finalists again, and we got our work cut out, but we'll do the best we can. Any other comments on that? I'm gonna ask Nate and Dan Ricker maybe to come forward and talk a little bit about stormwater rates. Right now, our stormwater rate for the city of Decatur is $1.80, probably, well, I know it is. It's one of the lowest in the state of Indiana. It's in the bottom five of the state of Indiana. Some stormwater rates are in the neighborhood of $10, $15 per household, versus $1.80. We have some projects that we'd like to do, and we don't have the money to do them, so Nate and Dan have been looking at this. We've hired a rate consultant to give us some advice on that, and they're almost complete with their study. And it's something, nobody likes to raise rates, but at this day and age, we're not getting anything done. All we're doing is paying the bills for things that happen, wages and other expenses. If we want to get some projects done, we just need more money. We don't have it. Dan, Nate, whoever wants to talk here.
As John said, we are the lowest stormwater rate in the whole state. And through customer phone calls, Nate's been researching a lot of areas in town that people have issues with flooding after heavy storms and as such. So we've been looking at our stormwater rates and trying to figure out a way, what we need to do to be able to afford these capital projects. So as John said, we have, Crowe Horloff out of Indianapolis is doing a rate study for us, and we're waiting for the information to come back from them. They took all financials plus all the capital improvements, and they're gonna tell us kind of where we need to be with the rates to do the projects that we want to do. Right now, we're looking, I mean, a couple months ago, I didn't announce, but just doing cost estimates of those projects, and I think we had totaled over $6 million of identified work. Now, certainly, we don't need to do that project, those projects right now, but how do we tackle those in light of the fact that other infrastructure is aging? And so we need to find some way to try to tackle those projects individually and itemize it. So that's our goal, to try to get those projects on, do them with our own forces, and try to do it cost effectively as best we can. But right now, with the rate as it is, we bring in less money than we can even finance one project every other year. And those are incremental and very small. To try to get the best bang for our buck, we need to be able to tackle a larger project team with the sewage department, the water department, and the street department to try to make sure that we're hitting one area and do multiple utilities at a time. And right now, the stormwater doesn't have the resources to really effectively do those.
Yeah. And these projects are not, when you take a stormwater, you think of the river, and these are not just all along the river. They're just all over the city. And they're, Mick Avenue, Master Drive is a major problem, and we could spend $200,000, $300,000 on a project there right now. And I don't know if that would even cover it all, but we have some out in the homestead area. There's some flooding issues that we have to address, just all over the whole city, really. So my neighborhood, there's an issue with groundwater, just flooding things out, so.
Yeah, we have Phase 1 of Eastbrook, that's under, we've got other phases we want to do, or I want to do, but it'll take the two years of saving money just to be able to finance that. So, and there's other projects that are in greater need than that is. So that's a design I'm gonna have to sit on for a number of years, unfortunately, until we can come back.
And it can be done, and I think we've proven that, it can be done by what we did here a few years ago out in Anthony Wind Meadows. It was a combination of the street department and the sewer department working together to get something done. And that has worked, so I'm confident we can get it done.
The Eastbrook project, approximately, what kind of cost is that?
That one, I broke that up a number of ways to try to stretch my dollars. So like, we bought materials direct, and then I had a contractor just install it and use the labor cost. I mean, that project alone probably over $60,000.
And that flooded 20 years ago, bad. I grew up in the neighborhood.
It was a 20- or 30-year issue, and we finally got it resolved. Now, $60,000 for something that, that old, I mean, that's a situation that got with a lot of drainage. And to try to fix old areas, unfortunately, it's not new development. It's old neighborhoods that were installed using smaller pipes, and then you phase change new developments and series, and a 100-year-old storm sewer in Swayell is now flooding essentially. You've got a 24-inch pipe that's been that same diameter that goes 2,500 feet through town draining 500 acres. Now, it's just not able to take long.
Yeah, one project I know is, we found out, we did a little project and found out that one of the neighbors along that pond basically took out what was controlling the flooding so he could fish. So, you know, we just needed to keep on top of all of these, and since Nate's come aboard, he's at least been able to look at some of the driving tension areas that we have and make sure that they're working properly, so.
And I'll just interject this. There's a lot of reasons why we're faced with having to do this. We talked about this at the Board of Works meeting, but first of all, we haven't raised the rates since they were first placed in 2004, so it's 11 years. During that period, the costs of materials has increased, the cost of labor has increased, inflation. We've lost purchasing power because of inflation alone. So it's time that we have to do something in order to put us in a position where we can start trying to address some of these projects. The second thing is that in talking with Crowe Horloff, as they are doing the study, we learned that whatever increase in the stormwater rates will benefit us in getting a good interest rate on our sewer bond issue because they, when they look at the overall revenues of the utility, the stormwater gets factored into that. So whatever revenues come in from the stormwater benefits that, and it's an expression, it's called coverage, but ideally, you want to hit about 140% coverage in order to get the maximum interest rate. And by increasing this, that will help us attain that figure. The third thing is that we're faced constantly with unfunded mandates. We get issues that are required us, or that we have to address because of requirements from either EPA or from the state item. And as a result, what happens is, they mandate that we do it, but they don't provide any resources. So now, we're left to fund it ourselves. And that kind of leads into the next issue, and that is, another reason for the rate increases, the property tax caps and the impact that it's had. In the past, we had the luxury of indirectly subsidizing utilities to some degree through the use of property tax revenues. Because of the property tax caps, that has reduced the amount of property tax revenue that we have to work with. That money now is going primarily to fund our operating budget. We don't have excess property tax revenues that we can use to subsidize some of these expenses that in the past we did. So, and the last thing, John talked about the different projects in the different neighborhoods that really need to be done, that would improve those neighborhoods tremendously in terms of walkability and just the overall quality of living in those neighborhoods. And that goes hand in hand with what we're trying to accomplish through being designated as a Stellar community. So it makes sense for us as a community to look at doing this. Nobody likes to pay more when it comes to a monthly bill, but if we're going to tackle these projects and improve the quality of life and meet the mandates that are coming down, we have to do it. We don't have a choice.
Okay. Thanks, guys, for your presentation. We'll address this probably at the next meeting. We'll start the process of the stormwater. Thank you. TIF districts, that seems to get popular all the time. TIF, I'm gonna let Tim explain the changes that we've made to our TIF area and what we're doing there to help the city out.
Okay. The TIF district, when it was created a couple years ago, there's a Decatur Economic Development Area and an Allocation Area. And at the time that was created, they were the same, and it basically was most of Decatur. Both were the same areas. What happened is that in the last couple of years, the Department of Local Government Finance changed its position, or I really shouldn't say changed its position, just started enforcing a position that they hadn't enforced previously. And that was that, in the past, when we created the TIF district, the attitude was that residential, any decreases in residences couldn't hurt a TIF district or help it. It was neutral. So it really didn't matter whether residences were included in the allocation area or not because it was, it had no impact. About a year and a half ago, the Department of Local Government Finance changed its position on that and took the position that, from that point on, changes or decreases in property tax assessment for residences can only hurt districts. If they go up, it can't increase or help the district, but it can hurt it. And so what happened is, we had a number of residences that had adjustments to assessed value. Appeals were done, and that was also done by a lot of major industries within the community. And the community never looked back was that the base year assessed value dropped $5 million, okay? So the impact of that is that you now have to have new growth of at least $5 million before you capture any revenue. Well, we didn't have that. We had growth, but not nearly to the tune of $5 million. So the TIF district recognized no capture of revenue because of that. So we talked to Unbond Associates, which is our financial advisor, and Barnes &amp; Thornburg, Tom Pittman, who is our bond counselor, to see what we needed to do to address that issue. And what we ended up doing is, we amended the TIF district allocation area, not the redevelopment area, because you can use captured revenues in the entire redevelopment area. But we reduced the allocation area to try to eliminate as many of the residences as we could and to take out certain properties that had had a huge decrease in their assessed value because that's what was dragging us down and preventing us from capturing any revenue. And somebody asked, well, why do you want to capture the revenue? Well, because it's an economic development tool that we're trying to have to compete against other communities that have had this economic development tool for 15 or 20 years. They've been able to build up cash balances. They can offer incentives that today, Decatur simply can't. We don't have the resources. And if we want to be competitive in trying to attract businesses and get businesses to come to Decatur, it's a tool that we have to try to make a reality for us. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish. You know, I know there's concerns about some of the other taxing units that it impacts them. It doesn't take away any existing revenues, but it does capture revenues that they might get in the future if there were new construction. But it doesn't mean that we're not going to use that in a way that ultimately doesn't ultimately benefit them as well. It's just more of an indirect benefit, but in the long run, it will benefit everybody. And so that's what we're trying to accomplish. That's why we did the amendment. And we may be looking at another amendment down the road where we may actually identify properties that we would potentially target to try to acquire if they became available. That's something that we'll look into and may pursue. But for now, we've done that. The idea is that with the change that was made and just recently completed, that by 2016, we're hoping to see some revenues. We won't see any change this year, but next year, we're hoping that we'll start to see a difference.
Any questions? That gets very confusing, I understand, but we're working hard to make sure that it does happen. Like Tim said, there's communities that have had this for 15, 20 years. We're just late in the game, so we'll do what we can. Redevelopment Commission has really been working hard on this over the last few years, and we appreciate all their help and what they're doing. Thank you. Main Street. We're fortunate tonight. We have a few of the Main Street committee members here. I see Max Muller's here, Brad March, and Larry Ish. Who's speaking for you guys?
Brad.
Bradwell, okay.
Brad, I'm here, John, our newsletter. On page 5 is what we're gonna talk a little bit about tonight. But we're here basically to talk about, one of the groups that's working on the old 27, how we're
Thanks, Brad.
Working on a business to, for the downtown area, you know, to drive, bring people coming on 2733 to, you know, come downtown and not just pass through on US 113. So we look up historically, and Michigan has done this. They reconnected downtown to those things. A lot of times those bypasses, you know, from the downtown. So they re-designate the old highway, US 27, which historically ran from northern Michigan down to Miami, Florida. It's kind of like Route 66, and Michigan has done it. They reestablished the old route along with promoting the new route, too. So if people coming into your city, you know, they'll go through, maybe possibly to tourists, go through the downtown area. And that's why we're looking to, there on page 5, it shows the original route there, and the pink or red has it going through downtown, and then 13th Street is the current route. I mean, we're here tonight because they were just trying to give you an idea of what we're working on. If you have any questions or concerns about it, I'll answer you or get an answer back to you as we push forward and hopefully do it. We do have a sample sign, possibly what it will, Indot's from, right near.
This is not for sale. You know, we just got this as an example.
That's good. I believe Angola doing something about their Highway 27.
Yeah, actually, the people who started it in Michigan and pushed it, now they have the whole state. They'll even do like car shows, where classic car shows where you jump on the route, take it. It comes all the way down to Auburn.
Uh-huh, so far.
They're pushing to go into the state of Indiana, all the way through Indiana, and continue state by state to go on down. I mean, for car shows, you know, Old 27, garage sales, different kind of
Promotion.
Promotions, a different thing.
And it is a national effort, but it's really being spearheaded here in Indiana because there's multiple cities who are already participating. They're just trying to close the gap, and Decatur happens to be one of them. So it is a promotable event that's taking place already that will allow us to hopefully draw attention from passersby as well as people who like to do the Route 66. Hopefully, US 27 comes the same way. And everybody likes to visit the whole downtown area, and we're hoping that we can jump on that bandwagon, too, to help get traffic down here. Go ahead, Max, and I've got some comments on this.
I mean, basically, I think we said everything. I mean, at one point, we'd like to do a flyer thing, put it out there for tourism. That would not only promote the historic route, but also the current route. Anything out there to stop by and see why you're in Decatur, you know, you can check out these different locations, different things. But be sure that it's downtown.
Now, this is something that Nate, Nate and Jeremy have been involved with our organizational meetings. You guys are probably gonna have to look at this a little bit individually. But they are designated with the route that's on the city map, and then also, there's little green dots as to areas that we have targeted. And they're not all within the city. Obviously, some of them are in county area. But there's about 25 signs that we've identified now, and we may add more just to designate the actual route so that people are familiar with it when they get here. But wayfaring signs from strategic locations on Highway 27 north and south, as well as 224 from the west, 33, and then even through the community, Washington Street, Monroe Street, Adams Street, directing people down to the old historic US 27 site.
Good idea.
We're trying to do it in coordinated efforts by the street department, and Nate with his engineering background, because Nate's already done some signage. He knows a lot of the setbacks, things of that nature. So this is that project that Main Street's been working on for probably six months to a year. We're just now starting to see it come to fruition, so. We do have a meeting, and I want to still, Max, Friday morning, we're meeting with the representative from Indot, and his name is Jeremy Danfender. And, you know, this is just an example. We think it'll evolve like this, but we don't know about reflect and paint. We don't know about size, things of that nature. So, you know, we will get the more specifics on those, especially along the Indot routes.
Good.
Actually, I ordered this one, too, as an idea for a fundraiser, you know. You can hang these in your man cave or whatever we may be selling these for other people that still want to talk their street.
Yeah, there you go. Well, guys, I'm impressed with your idea and what you're doing here, really. That's very nice. So would you like, and then, and then you'll do your design and signs and everything else? Then you'll order some signs. Is that basically how it works?
That's exactly right. And, you know, we brought the map here just in case there was question about the designated areas. Basically, you know, the main thoroughfares that are feeding the downtown areas, we're gonna try to designate.
Yeah, sure, sure.
As well as up and down, and you all know that Winchester Street and basically North Second Street is the old
Road 27, right.
So we'll be designating signings along those routes as well, just like them.
This is up to you, but this is
Yeah, I think the same thing. The newsletter is very impressive, too. That's great.
Max, we give him the credit.
Okay. Take it, Max.
But that's been an experienced hour of the Main Street effort, and I'll be continuing, so.
Jeremy, you got a comment?
Just like these guys have brought up, Friday, we're just gonna meet with Indot because we're also talking about the way finding signs also. This project's gonna be pretty well straightforward, other than the ones along 27 and all the state routes. We still need to meet with Tim Barkley from the county, which I have a meeting already set up with him for a handful of other things that we're working with. I do have a lot of the material in stock for this project, you know, with, you know, just the regular posts and stuff that we use on a daily basis. In the last meeting, they did ask me to contact some of the sign makers and get some prices on it. So there is some money available for the signs.
So you can cover that out of your budget, then?
Yes.
Well, good. And then you can erect the signs on their behalf?
Correct.
Well, good.
It's been a little slow coming, but it's coming here, they're closing really quick here. I hope it'll probably, you know, signs are normally four weeks to get in, once you have something to custom make like that. So, you know, early summer, it could be done very easily.
Good.
You know, in the downtown area, because of the congestion and storefronts and the rest, there was discussion about not trying to use some of those signs immediately in the downtown area, but to go rid of them. So we've had a lot of progress as far as what that was. Those as well, or is that something we want to try to follow this up with?
That's a good comment, and I think that's probably still up for discussion with ARG group. Yeah, and John's holding there.
We got banners here, yeah.
Those banners will be used, the brackets are going to be left for the community of Decatur to use.
That's correct.
Even after ARG has their big
Rally.
Rally, has Jamboree as well, and do their own act. But anyhow, then there's been conversation about canvas signage, designating those areas. It can be changed out. You can make it seasonal, you know, whether you're just gonna promote the Easter holiday. You're gonna do a fall fest for Kiki Yanga, but those brackets will then be utilized and interchangeable.
Yeah, ARG basically was buying all the brackets and the hanging hardware and everything like that, and they want to put their banner on for their
Yeah, ARG basically is buying all the brackets and the hanging hardware and everything like that, and they wanna put their banner on for their rally. Well, after their rally's over, they're gonna give that hardware and stuff to us, and we can have our own banners promoting Kikianga or Calathumpian or Motorsports Festival, or whatever, whatever you wanna promote, you know. The more hard signage in the approach areas, maybe interchangeable signage, when we get the people down there, maybe the banners and stuff might be sufficient, or we change them out. Yeah.
Some phases even, and this, this can develop, uh, and the identity develops, and we have some success, so it's not a big push, and this being one project finished, but there's, there's some ways for this.
That's continuing, yeah.
And so, and that's, that's a benefit for, I think, for the community, so.
Sure, I think it's important, we feel like it's important for the community to see, like, organizations like Main Street's actually moving forward with this project. Yeah. And, you know, this helps to create esteem for the greater Decatur and stellar community effort, and, uh, and this is gonna be your, whether we're a stellar community successful. That's right, exactly. Pretty good. Yeah, I wanna compliment you guys on what you're, what you're doing with this old twenty-seven route, but also on just Main Street in, in general. We, we've not been a member of Main Street for a year, I mean, what, six months, Larry, I think you and I went up to receive the designation? And you guys have accomplished a heck of a lot in that six-month period, so I wanna thank you for your efforts. I think it's gonna show a lot of future, uh, uh, future growth for, for our city with, with what you guys are doing, so. I wanna compliment you on everything you've done.
And, and even with this project, you know, we, we talked in the last couple of meetings about the sidewalks, you know, on, on Winchester, the paving and stuff needs to get out. You're just pulling several things into, into one nice finished project, so.
Good, well, again, I compliment you on, on what you've accomplished so far, and Max has got one more thing he wants to mention.
The group in Michigan that helped us through the whole state of Michigan is that they were looking for a centralized city within Indiana's main, um, old twenty-seven, which they're looking at Portland, but, you know, I kind of talked them in to come in to Decatur, to invite Richmond, Portland, you know, for Auburn, all those to come, you know, to help work together on a tourism promotional thing for the whole state, so.
We'll support that, thanks, Max, yeah. We'll, we'll definitely support them the best we can, definitely, thanks for your efforts. Okay, thanks, guys, appreciate it. We'll leave this map here, and if you guys wanna look. That's fine, we'll do it, okay, thanks again. Um, I don't know, we probably should, uh, make a motion to approve the expenditure from Jeremy's budget to fund their signings that they want. Okay, so we, like, motion second, on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried, thank you. I do wanna remind everyone that, that, uh, the next meeting is not on a Tuesday, it's gonna be on April twenty-second, a Wednesday. Council was gracious enough to change that for some personal reasons of Tim and I and Matt here, but, uh, again, it's on, on, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-second, at, uh, seven-thirty for the council meeting and six o'clock for the board of workers meeting. Do want to have a proclamation, make it a matter of record, uh, it's an official proclamation, um, I don't know if I'm gonna read the whole thing, but Roger Gage asked me to, to include this, that Flood Safety Awareness Week, if we know that or not, but now you know it. This week here that we're in is Flood Safety Awareness Week, and, uh, I have a proclamation here. I'll, I'll just hand it over to you guys, and you, if you wanna, uh, read it and put it in the newspaper or mention on the radio, you can. It is supported in the Mami River Basin, Roger's involved heavily with the Mami River Basin, and, uh, local items like this, uh, score well for, for them trying to reach out to people, so. We probably shouldn't make that a matter of record that we are making Flood Awareness Week this week, so.
So moved.
Motion second, on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried.
In coordination with the River Summit, is that all part of it?
No, it's not really, the River Summit, uh, that can't talk, and that was taking place this week, boy, of all weeks, we had a conflict here. It's a tri-state water alliance, which is Saint Mary's River, Saint Joe River, the Mami River, all the water in these whole areas eventually goes to Toledo, Ohio, and they're trying to promote the rivers and, and how much, and how much we use the rivers and, and the quality of the rivers, so. They're, they're having a, a summit on that this week, uh, there's some, some, uh, activities going on at, uh, downtown.
Grand Wayne?
Grand Wayne Center, yeah, thank you. I think they have something on the Wall Street corridor, too, that they're promoting, so. Uh, we, we support everything they're doing, uh, we've been a member of that since its infancy and, and, uh, really help try to promote it. We gave them some sketches that we had here for our stellar, uh, projects, we let them use them to show what we're doing here in Decatur to promote the river use. Can anyone add to that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, every year, we need to, uh, uh, publish, guys, the, our combined sewer overflow notification rule. We have to tell people how many times our river gets up, and we keep track of all those things, and there's a legal notice we have to put in the paper that says we've done that. And, uh, so we did that, and it was put in the paper down here, March twenty-third of this year, but we need to make that a matter of record that we did follow through with that requirement, so. Motion second, on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Department head, so Dan, you got anything else? Nothing? Nate? Fire, fire department. Jeremy, heavy trash is going on. I think some people got mixed up, thought it was last week, I seen some heavy trash out last week, oh my god, people.
On Sunday, there was stuff out, Fridays are out. Anyhow, heavy trash is going on this week, and it's pretty heavy.
Jeremy, you said I last night got taken.
We're, we're getting a big note, so that's a good sign.
It's a great service, I think, that we give there.
We do have a couple openings, um, I did post them in the paper, and I posted online, so you can accept an application till April seventeen in my office, so, uh, I look forward to getting those two jobs filled here.
Okay, and what jobs are on those?
Just a sanitation collector and a sanitation substitute labor operator. So we have both type positions.
And you're taking applications till April?
April seventeen.
April seventeen?
That information's on the city webpage.
Yes, correct, correct.
And on Facebook?
Go ahead, Matt.
And on Facebook, shared around already?
Um, also, the Monroe Street project will begin tomorrow. It was supposed to begin on Monday, but the weather threats kind of held off a couple days, so. Uh, tentative, Thursday morning, the intersection at Monroe Pickway will close for forty-five days. So, it's gonna be pretty congested out there for a month and a half, but that's what we've been waiting on for four years to.
Yeah, yeah.
To get going on this project, so. At the end of the forty-five days, once that portion is completed, they will open that up and move to the east with the tentative completion date of September nineteenth. The engineering firm did open up a office here in, in town for questions, problems, so on and so forth. Indot has directed those questions, concerns to be directed to me, and then I will get with the contractor and/or the engineering firm.
Good.
So if you get any calls or anything, just please get with me so we can kind of straighten line up the communication.
And we're fortunate, we, we have a local contractor that was a little bitter on this, Fleming Excavated, so, uh, we'll be working very closely with them. Thank you. Bill Harbach, you got anything? Welcome back to the real world. Roger? Ann? Mike, please do part of it. Melissa? It's yours.
We are still accepting names for the Pocket Park, uh, for the end of the month, you can submit them to me by email, drop off from here, or call the state office. Our reminder about our open house here this week.
Very good.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, from five to seven-thirty, and Saturday from nine to noon. You mentioned it in the last meeting, I wanna mention it this week, thanks to Mary for doing the student art out here in the hallway, if you haven't seen it, go, please go by and check it out. Um, she's gonna handle the schedules, it'll rotate in and out each month. This month is the science, seventh and eighth grade art class, and next month, the seventh, fourth, and fifth, so, um, say thank you to Mary and go out and check out the park.
Yeah, it does look nice, very, very, thank you, Mary, it is, it's bringing it in very well there, yeah. Thank you for reminding me about the open house, I forgot about that, yeah. What was the first thing you mentioned? Pocket Park, by the way, I, Main Street's gonna, they're in charge of that, so it's not city council or myself as mayor, it's, uh, uh, Main Street's gonna choose the name of that and choose when it's gonna be dedicated and what's gonna be put in there and things like that, so we appreciate their help. Uh, you know how I feel about that. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, council members, anybody with council, anything you wanna bring up quick?
Yeah, I do, it's.
Yeah, go ahead, Kenny.
When I see the guys from Main Street, and I sat in on the Greater Decatur Committee meetings, in the almost twelve years I've been on council, I have not seen this much volunteer service by locals ever.
Yeah.
I mean, in two thousand and three, when we had the flood, there was all kinds of volunteerism, but this is different, I mean, this is toward.
This is ongoing.
Yeah, this is an ongoing thing, it's just really neat, so I just wanna thank everybody for all their volunteer service.
Thank you.
It is neat to see, it's neat to see the, everybody running for city councils also in attendance tonight, wanting to hear what's going on, get involved, many of them are involved already, and it's just good to see that people wanna be involved in what's going on in Decatur.
Yeah, okay. Comments from the public, I won't, I won't name everybody's name, but anybody got anything to say, please rise. Mary, go ahead, please.
I'd like to say thank you to city council for allowing our work of the students and the community to become, um, I have some other questions to ask for the topic. What does the city plan to do specifically with the TIF money?
Uh, that, that can vary from year to year, uh, depending on, on attraction of, of new businesses or industry.
It, it's generally, it can be used for property acquisition, it can, it can be used for demolition of buildings, if that were something that needed to be done. It can be used for infrastructure improvements, uh, if you have to run a sewer line or a water line to a location in order for a commu, a business to be sited there, so there's a lot of different, uh, uses of that type of revenue, we just don't have any to work with. And, and what we run into is when we're competing for a business with another community that has three or four million dollars, some of those are literally building a shell building and donating the building to the business in order for them to come.
Bringing the jobs.
We, we have no way to compete with that.
But there's also TIF financing.
Yes, and then, as opposed, as opposed to abatements.
You can give a finance, and you can actually help finance their operation as opposed to giving in a tax abatement, so it's almost like a.
It's a bond issue, that they purchase the bond, and then you basically donate the money back to them that they use to pay the debt service.
Okay, yeah, I, I realize that, but what does the city of Decatur plan on doing with the money that's gathered from them? I'm curious, did you have a plan in place?
It, it depends on what type of use or, or needs are available at the time we actually have money to work with. I mean, that's gonna be something that we will be looking at here probably within the next year to try to prioritize certain things that we would use. One of the things that I mentioned earlier was probably some real estate acquisition, once we have revenues to work with.
Or the sewer, maybe, or even the water problem that they were mentioning?
Well, if, if, if there's an industry that needed more sewer, we could use.
We could use that to run a line to that location.
Or a water line.
Like a water.
Or, or even, yeah.
With the property that's there, I'm just curious, I am.
You're saying that like, to offset, instead of user fees? That, I mean, instead of rate increases, using this as opposed to the rate increases?
Yes.
No, it's two, two different things, it's two different pots of money that you have to use for different purposes.
Okay. There's a lot of different problems with TIF as far as it being abused, that's why it was done away with in other communities, like in California, they've got it entirely.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of checks and balances in place in Decatur for that? I mean, I'm not accusing you of anything, I'm just asking.
Well.
We haven't had any money, we, we couldn't be without.
What I can tell you is that typically what you run into, where it became a problem, was the redevelopment commission just going off and doing their own thing without any input or involvement of elected officials, and that's really what has prompted kind of a backlash to that. I don't, I mean, honestly, in a small community such as ours, I don't think you're gonna have that, typically, you find that in bigger communities.
I haven't seen that in our area, in northeast Indiana, I have not seen that in northeast, I've seen it around the donut communities around Indianapolis, you know, when they start spending money for, uh, performing arts centers, you know, they're spending millions and millions of dollars on that, is that what it's really for? I don't live in that community, so. That, that's why we're getting a neighbor's comment.
But part of the checks and balances, um, is how the redevelop, who constitutes redevelopment commission?
Right.
And the fact that there's members that are, they're.
They're appointed by the council and the mayor.
And there's, has to be representatives from the school district.
Yes.
Um, legal counsel, so those, that's some of the control we have is paying by the appointment of who the mayor appoints, who, who the council appoints, um, who constitutes that group.
And, and there has been change in the legislation that now gives, uh, more and more reporting requirements of the redevelopment commission to council, so the council is aware of what's going on. So it's, that's, they're, they're trying to find a balance there, I think, Mary, of preventing the abuse of use of those funds, uh, but still allowing the flexibility to use them as is needed in the community.
And what is the duration, how long are the?
Twenty years.
Well, it, it really is tied to a bond issue, now, that could change in the, in the legislature session, there's been some talk about limiting it period, but typically, once you fund, if you have a TIF revenue bond, uh, then the, uh, the TIF district expires twenty-five years out from the date that that bond issue starts, so. And it's really designed because typically, bond issues go out for twenty to twenty-five years, so if you're gonna capture revenues to help pay for that bond issue, you have to have those revenues available until that bond issue's paid off, so that's the reason for it.
Do you foresee the city taking out bonds, or?
Well, it's not the city that would take the bond out, it's, it's basically if a, if a business wants to come to the community and build a, a big building. One of the ways, instead of giving a, a tax abatement to that company, uh, you can, you, whatever the new revenue that would be captured by the redevelopment commission for the improvements could then turn around and be basically donated back to the business, uh, or as part of it, to help subsidize or pay for the debt service of borrowing to do the improvements. So basically, the, the, there's no exposure to the city because it's not a bond that's held by the city, it's held by the business itself, okay? So it's just an economic incentive that you can provide, that we don't have the capability of doing now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank, anyone else from the public? Larry?
Is there a job on the jobs that we have open at the H. department?
Anybody that's qualified. Come on over, you can apply, Larry. Okay, no one else? Thank you, Tim, you got anything?
No.
Uh, Phila?
Um, just remind council that we're gonna be working on budgets soon, so I print it off everybody.
Budgeted, yeah.
New fund report.
These were just approved by D L G F, uh, that's, I think.
Three there. Wow. And then, um.
Any other?
Yeah, um, so if you guys can think about, if you wanna give raises, 'cause we'll need to.
Yeah, it's part of the budget.
Figure out where we wanna go with that, and then, um, this year, or for next year, we will have lowered public safety, we'll have to set up a budget for that, so. That money can be used for a place and fire, so we'll have a separate budget for that, that's gonna be due this year.
Okay, any questions for Phila? Thank you, uh, Quinn, Bill?
Make a motion on one of the pages.
Second.
Motion to pay the claims, on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried, thank you.